Welcome to the City of Daly City regular meeting for the planning commission. Uh, today is Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty five. Uh, to watch this live telecast, um, please go to HTTPS. Uh, slash WWW YOUTUBE DOT COM slash at DAILYCITY DOT GOV. Slash streams or for Comcast channel twenty seven. Uh, for public tra- uh, participation, there are three ways to submit public comment. First is to email your comment directly to the planning division. Submit written comments via the city's website and attend the meeting in person. Um, so now we pledge, um, allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now may we, uh, have a roll call, please?
Okay, uh, Fapua is absent, uh, Satori.
Question.
Neris?
Here.
Paniza is absent and Katoa?
Katoa here. Now, um, for approval of the minutes from June third, twenty twenty five, planning commission meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve minutes?
So.
Second.
Aye. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So today we have a, we have public hearing for the use of permit U P R dash zero one dash two three dash zero one six zero four four. Uh, for the design review, D R dash zero one dash two three dash zero one six oh four six. Demolition of an existing service station and new construction of a service station, convenience store and car wash. We have Sam Fielding, um, to present, um, for the property located at one oh one South Mayfair Avenue.
On the screen.
Well.
Can you sing or dance?
What?
Can you sing or dance?
No, I can do the presentation without it. Uh, so, all right, we'll go ahead and do it without it. If there're, you know, what the screen, the screens, so we have our technical support guy out there. I wonder if he could take a look at it. What we got? Okay, well, we'll just get started then. Uh, good evening, Chair Katur and planning commissioners Satori and Norris. The item before you is a request for review and approval of the use permit and design review entitlements for a new service station, convenience store and car wash at one oh one South Mayfair Avenue. Oh, there we go. It was up there. Um, the proposed project, uh, is located at a site that's currently an existing gas station with smog check garage and snack shop on an approximately twenty two thousand five hundred square foot lot. The applicant proposes construction of a new service station, convenience store and car wash. Uh, will increase the fuel service aisles from four to eight aisles, providing a new canopy and service pumps, a new larger convenience store and a car wash. Project includes new landscaping, streetscape and pedestrian improvements and new signage for the business. The required planning entitlements are the use permit to allow the construction of a new gas station, convenience store and car wash and design review for the new gas station, convenience store and car wash. That includes looking at the landscaping, pedestrian and streetscape improvements, the new signage and the design of the store. Here we have the project timeline. Uh, the application was received on December twenty second uh, for the use permit and design review. Then in January of twenty twenty four, technical studies were begun for noise and vibration assessment, hydrology and hydraulic study, the geotechnical study, the traffic memo and the utility study. And then on August eighth, twenty twenty five, uh, planning entitlement review was deemed complete and we are scheduled right now for the planning commission hearing. A little bit more information about the, the project. Uh, the specifics of the project, it will include a three thousand two square foot canopy, new service pumps and aisle configuration. The convenience store of two thousand three hundred four square feet that will operate twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty five days per year. The car wash, uh, that's nine hundred seventy one square feet. And it's proposed operations from eight AM to nine PM, seven days a week, three hundred sixty five days a year. As was mentioned before, there's streetscape and pedestrian improvements. That would include new sidewalk on the west side and adjacent to Poncetta Drive, connecting to the Westlake Apartments and new driveways, medians and islands. There will be landscaping that includes four hundred sixty two s- uh, square feet of new landscaping, including a variety of trees, shrubs and ground cover plants and new signage on for the canopy, pylon and monument and wall signs. This is the location of the project site on the southwest corner of South Mayfair Avenue and Poncetta Drive, south of John Daly Boulevard. As was mentioned before, the site is an existing service station located at the intersection of South Mayfair and Poncetta Drive. The site is bordered by John Daly Boulevard to the north and single family residential housing, the Boulevard Restaurant to the east and I two eighty and the Westlake Residential Development and Lake Merced Golf Course to the south and directly east has multi-family apartments or directly to the west. One oh one South Mayfair Avenue is designated commercial service in the general plan and zoned line light commercial. These are some staff, uh, site photos of the existing site. And these are the, uh, site plan and photos uh, submitted by the applicant from top left to right, looking northwest, north, northeast, south, west and southwest. This plan shows the existing site, so you'll, you'll notice that the location of the gas station aisles are, uh, located to the north of the site and, um, sort of an east-west configuration. And this is the proposed site plan, which changes the configuration of the, uh, gas station aisles. Locates them further to the, uh, east on the site. The project will include seventeen parking spaces, including for fueling and eight parking spaces for the convenience store.
How many pumps will be there?
There'll, there'll be, uh, four fuel pumps, but eight, eight aisles, eight drive aisles. Is that correct? Yeah, yeah.
Two aisles and?
There'll be, uh, eight, but the, the, the number of gas station pumps will be the same, four, four, four pumps.
You have the picture, so you have to.
Yes.
Each of those brown things are two, one on each side, right?
Right.
And so then there's two aisles that go out either side of it, right?
Yes, yeah.
And at this end here, there's two other things. What are those?
Sorry, which, which?
And then if you continue down the picture, there's two more things that look like pumps. Are those pumps also, or?
I think you're, you're, you're looking at the tanks, not the dispensers. You want me to point?
Yes.
That's right.
So, so the square, the rectangular, you know, has four dispensers.
Okay.
This is one.
Yes.
And you go down, this is two, three, four.
Those.
Each one has two.
Those are the pumps.
Those are the pumps.
Ah, so those are the things on to the right of it, those, those round things, whatever.
Oh, those are underground storage.
Oh, okay.
Like right on top.
I thought those were the, I thought those were the.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
There's also new medians and islands as part of the project, uh, new ADA compliant sidewalk and driveways. Uh, the site will have three driveways, a two-way driveway from South Mayfair Ave, a one-way entrance from Poncetta Drive and then a two-way driveway at the Poncetta Drive located at the southern, uh, southeast corner of the, of the lot. This next slide shows the convenience store and the car wash floor plan. And it shows the entrance, uh, on the right side of the slide, uh, is the, what entrance driveway off of, uh, of, of, of Mayfair, South Mayfair Avenue. And then the entrance to the car washes proceeds by where that arrow is located and then it exits on the south end.
Can I, can I, let's go again. Where did the cars come in then on this side? Uh, you're coming out of the car wash and then are cars coming in at the same spot or further down?
They're gonna be coming in from, uh, South Mayfair Ave, South Mayfair Ave. Yeah, I just brought my pointer.
They're coming out of the car wash down in the lower left corner there.
Mm-hmm.
And then where do you go out to the street? Straight, straight?
Yes, straight. You would go out straight to Poncetta Drive.
There?
Yes.
And then where people come in?
They would come in from Poncetta Drive where the two arrows.
Side is the building.
Yeah, the building is located on the west side of the lot.
No, I'm talking about the apartment building. It's at the lower part there, right? This apartment building across there.
Yes.
Cars will then come out of the lot, then they'll go turn left and then go straight out?
Oh, they'll turn right and go straight out.
Turn left.
Mm, well, yeah, sorry.
Part out of the car.
Yeah, out of the car wash, yeah. I thought you were talking about the, the apartments, yeah.
And then you have two-way arrows going there. What does that mean?
So the two-way arrows is, is to access the convenience store.
And there's enough room for traffic to get out of the car wash and also enter into the?
Yes. Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff on this lot. There's a lot of stuff. Okay.
Right, there's, so the, where the car wash, where the cars exit the car wash, that's one way. And then right at the point where you see the two arrows there, that, that, that part is two-way so that vehicles can still access the store, convenience store. And there's gonna be signage that clearly indicates, you know, uh, past that point, it's one way only, do not enter. Uh, next slide. So planning staff reviewed the design and exterior materials of the convenience store, carwa- and a car wash accord- in accordance with the LA CD municipal code. Objective design. and a car wash in accordance with the LA City Municipal Code, objective design review standards. The materials for the new convenience store and car wash included a combination of white and gray colors for the fascia, cement plaster, and tan painted plank lap siding. Planning staff determined that the design meets the LA City Municipal Code design requirements and supports the design and exterior materials for the project. These are the elevations of the convenience store, the east and south elevations. And this is the west and north elevations with the lattice detail that's added to the wall there to give it more character and break up the mass of the wall. The next slide is the fuel canopy. The next slide talks about the streetscape and pedestrian improvements that are planned. It includes new sidewalks, driveways, curb ramps, traffic circulation arrows, and landscaped areas that are incorporated in the project. The site plan also shows the entrances to the car wash, or the entrance to the car wash, the new landscaped areas. Again, the driveways and traffic circulation, and the location of the monument sign on the northeast corner, and the price sign on the northwest corner. Next slide. This is a zoomed-in version of the site plan showing the improvements on the southern part of the lot, the project. Next slide is the landscape plan. The project is proposing 462 square feet of new landscaping, including a variety of trees, shrubs, and ground cover plants, exceeding the 2% parking lot landscape mandated by the zoning ordinance. The tree species selected are the Muskogee, grape myrtle, and sweet bay trees, purple hopseed bush, and Boston ivy. And the ground cover includes rosemary, myopurum, large cape rush, and moonstruck marigold.
Who chooses these plants? I mean, I don't know what these are by name. I would not know what they look like. Are they determined by people that know what grows here, this kind of thing?
These are, were proposed by the applicant. I can have him maybe talk about the, you know, how they decided to choose those plantings. As part of the project, there was a noise and vibration assessment required. That was prepared by DUDAC. The assessment concluded that the traffic noise proposed for the project would not cause a discernible traffic noise increase at the residential properties adjacent to the project. Regarding construction noise, construction noise levels, even at the closest residence, would not be considered significant temporary noise impact, especially with the prohibition against nighttime construction. And then the study also looked at car wash noise, and the project incorporate, the study recommended a noise barrier, a noise barrier wall at the car wash exit. And with that noise barrier, the operational noise impact from the stationary sources would be less than significant. The proposed project does not incorporate any project elements that would generate substantial ground-bore noise and vibration levels during its long-term operation. Therefore, the potential environmental impact would be less than significant. This is a slide showing the location of the noise sound barrier, highlighted in green. So it's seven feet tall and 34 feet in length.
Sam, is that approximately, that seems short.
Well, this is actually at the, covers the exit portion of the car wash when the vehicles exit the car wash building.
So the open area where they dry?
Yes, yeah, the open area where they're driving out, yeah.
That's where they're gonna be blowers?
The, as far as like the details, the location of the blowers, I'm gonna defer to the applicant to explain the actual location of that. No, these, these don't show the blowers. This is just the site plan, the buildings and the driveways. But I can get back to you on that question. So the project also completed community outreach, so we did the 10-day prior notice, public noticing to property owners located within 300 feet of the proposed project, and it was also noticed in the local newspaper or local news bulletin. Seek, planning staff reviewed the proposed project for CEQA environmental review and determined it will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore is exempt from provisions of CEQA per section 15302, replacement or reconstruction class 2B, which entails the replacement of a commercial structure with a new structure of substantially the same size, purpose, and capacity. Staff is recommending the planning commission find that the proposed use permit and design review for the project are in accordance with Chapter 17 of the LA City Municipal Code and is exempt under CEQA 15302. Staff determined that the approval of the project will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity, and the proposed project would not be injurious or detrimental to property improvements in the neighborhood or result in a substantial environmental damage or disturbance given the conditions of approval for the project. Staff recommends the planning commission adopt the following findings, as outlined in the staff report. Staff is recommending that the planning commission take the following action. Recommend city council approval of a use permit and design review to allow a new service station, convenience store, and car wash at 101 South Mayfair Avenue. This concludes my presentation. We also have the applicant here, the property owner, and the representative, DUDAC, who prepared the noise study for the project.
Thank you, thanks, Sam. Anybody have questions for Sam?
We have a lot of questions.
Okay.
First, what kind of car wash are you going to build? This is this with fluffy or the straight air, strong air? What kind, the configuration of the car wash?
Touchless or brush with, with the brushes?
Yeah, I would defer to the applicant project.
Let him explain.
To, or the property owner.
Because there are three types of, I don't know, of car wash. One is, okay, go ahead.
Okay, the car wash we use is Mark VII car wash, and these are brush and brushless. So you can take your car, and the brushes come in, wash your car, and then you go to dry, dry it and go. Or without a brush, with a water pressure, wash your, yeah, just water pressure.
So which one are you going to apply?
I'm sorry?
What, what type of car wash are you going to apply to this?
This, this car wash has both feature. It has the brush and no brush. Has two feature, means you can have it, when you come into car wash, you have a choice. You say touch-free or soft brush, and you can, if you go put soft brush, the brushes come in, wash the car, and go. If you put touchless, you'd, if you put touchless, there is no brushes. You just go with the?
With a strong air?
No, water pressure.
Water pressure, yeah.
Yes.
So which one are you going to come with? Both?
Both.
Both of them?
Both of them, yes. Both of them gonna be at this.
Because strong air is more expensive than with a brush, right?
No, no, the price is the same. Actually, the function of the car wash is when you get in, you choose which car wash do you want, and the prices.
Besides, there are studies about some engineering thing that when you put a brush and then it hit the so-called, the configuration of the car, sometimes the brush can also make some lot, a lot of dent because of the brush. You know, the latest car now is 3D, the paint is 3D, just like some high-end, because sometimes, I don't go here in the local, I go to Burlingame, because it's purely, purely air, you know, the Burlingame corner?
Yes.
I go, it's more expensive, but it's good, because it doesn't touch the car.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking you if you can do it.
You can, you can have in a, in a car wash we're gonna put in, you don't need to have brushes. You can go in without the brushes and wash your car.
You have that kind of configuration?
Yes.
No brush?
No.
Only air? It's the first time I've heard it, because all gasoline stations here, they have.
No, this is, this is new technology. This is new technology and?
That's good. That's good to hear.
Yeah, a lot of, because some of the brushes that is being used can, can disfigure the paint of especially if the latest car is. You know, right now, the, the technology is so advanced, even the brushes, the sensors that's coming out of those, those car washes, it's just definitely.
You can make it more or less, LA City can be a good example of?
Yeah.
Car wash that this, if you're going to do it that way, then I appreciate it.
Yes, it's gonna be.
It's more expensive, but it doesn't touch the, you know, the?
No, no touch, yes.
You know what I mean?
Yes, it just doesn't touch the car at all. You go inside and out, and it's, your car clean going outside, yes. They call it touch-free.
Yeah, that's right.
Touch-free.
Right.
Means that nothing touching your car, yes. When you go inside the car, yes, just, yes, with the water.
How much does it cost to have?
You know, we have it, we run the same car wash in Sunnyvale, Cupertino, Salinas, and San Jose, and we have average car wash for about $15.
15 is good, yeah.
Yeah, $15.
Because the one that I am saying, Burlingame, is about 22, $22.
Yes.
But it's good.
Oh, it's great, yes, it's great. It's great. It's not, you probably, you know, it's, it's, there are days that packed and, you know, you have to stay in line because of, it takes about three to five minutes to clean your car, so every car is three to five minutes.
Because some people doesn't understand it that the moment they go to, I'm not criticizing those, the moment you go there, the brush can really disconfigure the painting, you know what I mean, the paint?
Yeah.
Because of the harsh brush.
It used to. And now, now it's the brushes, when they really, you know, the car, the cars are very expensive, and people are very picky with their cars, so.
If you can have that X-ray, then probably I'll go to your car wash.
Yes, yes, I definitely bring some, yeah, invite everybody to come in, yes. We're gonna have a grand opening and, yes.
You're Mr. Hadad, right?
Yes.
Are you also the owner of the Toyota?
No.
Oh, I thought.
No, I don't, yeah.
Can I ask another question to Mr.?
Yes.
You know, if I'm here, I really ask another question. Sorry, you have to bear with me. Well, with regards to the fiscal analysis, how much does the city get from the gasoline taxes? Do you know? Would you know? Like, just ballpark figure, you don't have to be exact. How much the city gets, say 10 cents, 11 cents per gallon? Would you know?
I would have to research that information for you.
Total taxes for gasoline right now in California, 80 cents.
For the city?
No, for the cities, I believe it's about, I am not, but I believe city of LA City is 11.5 cents.
Yeah, that's my, that's my thinking also.
11.5.
Because the people has to know that the impact of the gasoline station is also great for the city. To me, it's wonderful. It's the same tax, because?
The tax is also on top of.
The city, the state, and the federal tax, these are the things that makes gasoline expensive, especially here in the Bay Area. We have the most expensive gasoline here in the entire United States. Because of the air quality, Air Quality Act. I'm sorry to say it, because if you go to Minnesota, it's only $2.50 per gallon. Here, how much? It's almost $5.
We pay almost?
Double.
Every time you're pumping gas, you pay a dollar of that taxes.
Could be more because of the federal.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Thank you very much for your information, Mr. Hadad. I'm glad that you are here.
Thank you.
Can I?
Do you have another question?
Yeah. When it's going to be started, or the moment it goes out, when it's going to be completed? The completion date, do you think?
The project completion? Well, depending, so if it's recommended for approval of city council, and then if city council approve it, then the applicant can come in and submit building permit plans. And there's also a signed permit that's required also for the project.
How about the?
They have a year to do, to submit their.
The safeguards of, I would say, the danger of the gasoline, how would you describe it? Is it safe, purely safe or highly safe? Because this is gasoline, you remember? It's, it can explode. The people should know this also, that the gasoline is something that we have to be careful also.
Yeah, so, yeah, this project was reviewed by all city departments, including the fire department and building department, and so when they actually submit their plans for building supplemental, that also will be checked to make sure that all the city and state requirements, safety requirements are complied with during the building permit supplemental stage.
Another question to Mr. Hadad. Is there a possibility that the gasoline might get up because of the?
Gasoline does what?
To $7? Is that a possibility? No, because the? Because most of the gasoline, therefore, being removed here in this area is going to be far, so it'll be more expensive for you.
As you know, Marathon closes one refinery, 76, P66 also closed another one, and Valero just announced they are closing two, one in Southern and Northern California. So if, if that happened, that caused?
It can trigger.
Yes, it can trigger. As you know, El Segundo, right now, Chevron El Segundo has fire, and you will, you're seeing the prices.
So that the rumor is true?
It is going up because of the supply, less supply?
Yeah.
And the demand, so the prices go up, yeah. And it's, I hope, I hope there's authority can convince Valero not to pull out of California.
Well, and as much as we are in gasoline, just for the delectation of those people who are watching, what kind of gasoline do we get here? Where do we get the gasoline? Is it from the Brent oil or Saudi Arabia or locally?
Oh, you know what, these are, these are basically the, get there to the refinery, and it can be from anywhere, but mostly is, most of it is, yes, from the East, yes.
Because that's why our gasoline is higher here in California because of the so-called Brent oil, whereas the local gasoline, like in Santa Barbara or in Texas, there are more sulfur compared to? Whereas the local gasoline like in Santa Barbara or in Texas, there, there are more sulfur compared to.
So they use.
The Brent, that's why it's more expensive because of the Air Quality Act.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, uh. Thank you.
The good news is there's also two bicycle racks at the, at the gas station, so if the gas gets real expensive.
Sometimes we, we bring the gasoline station, it's, it's the government.
Go to the store, the convenience store. Yeah.
So will you also be selling diesel there?
That's correct.
Diesel also.
Yeah, the diesel is gonna be.
That will be one of the pumps.
Yes.
Uh, in the islands, not a separate one.
Yes, each, each dispenser have two also, one of them have for gasoline, three gauge of gas, three grade of gasoline. And the other one for.
What brand of gasoline do you have? It's, it's Shell or Valero?
The one is uh, right now is Valero, that's what we have it, and that's.
It's just a branding?
Yes. I'm sorry? You know, we are uh, we have three more, three years of uh, uh. Contract with them and I don't know, because Valero, there's a, there's a good possibility. If they leave their state, then we may change the brand.
To a, to?
Uh, uh, you know, it, it's uh, Shell is very.
Shell, Shell is good.
Very interesting.
Seven, seven-six good.
Yeah.
How many, how many gasoline stations do you have here?
We, we have around thirty.
Wow.
Yeah.
You must be a big time, huh? Big time guy. Thirty, yeah. Hadad, I, I know Hadad because uh. That's why I'm asking if you own Toyota.
No, Hadad, that's Toyota.
Well, I, I'm glad that you are in Daily City. You're, you're in good hands, sir.
And mainly they come from uh, uh, Lebanon, Palestine. And Iran, I'm, I'm Iran, Iranian.
That's good.
I, I immigrated when I was a kid.
Well, or country of immigrant here anyway. Well, I'm a Filipino, you're, for as long as we, we do our good citizenship here in America. That's the point.
I have three uh, kids that they're.
For as long as.
I, it is honored to be American and it is, it is great, land of opportunity and I hope I stay land of opportunity.
We just embrace the American dream. That's good.
Thank you. So?
Thank you. I myself immigrated from San Francisco to Daily City. So I'm not a native either. Uh, I'm wondering, uh, the, the water that you're using. As part of the uh, the system for the car wash.
Yes.
Uh, at, at certain points, it goes through filters and then you recycle some of the water, is that right?
Yes.
And then the water that then goes out will go through the system to uh, the sanitation, to uh, to the sanitation district.
Treatment as well. The water that goes, yes.
So the water that goes into the treatment facility of Daily City, uh, how, what, what, what is the standard of that water? Is there any kind of, uh, is there anything from the city that requires attention as far as that water containing?
It require different, different type of uh, treatment before it's get there, yes, which.
And when it gets to the city, then the city knows what's gonna be coming to it? Have they already, have they, have they chimed in on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Water wastewater reviews.
Water wastewater has reviewed this?
Yes.
Okay.
And then they will also participate in reviewing the building permit application.
That's what I was asking, thank you. Public notice was published also?
Yes.
What, what publication was it posted?
So, we do the ten day uh, three hundred foot radius uh.
What is that?
It's like a mailing uh, card that's sent to within a three hundred foot radius of the project site. And then my understanding is we also do a ten day public notice and, and like a, a news bulletin. It's, it's, it's. It's not exactly like, uh, we say newspaper, but it's not like a newspaper that, you know, you uh, um. Say like the Chronicle or something, but it's a, it's a local no, uh, news bulletin um, that's available in Daily City. So that's also published.
How is it go, online or what? Okay, that's appropriate as far as the legal notice?
Yes, that is appropriate. That is how we do all of our public notice.
Great, thank you. I'm just learning of some, some of these things. Because I don't see anybody here from the public speaking to this. Uh, which is a good thing, I guess, because they probably want this in their neighborhood. Um, everybody thinks car washes are good, so. That's what uh, I'm asking. The time for the car wash would be eight in the morning till nine at night, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what, what's gonna happen to the smog store that's there? That's why I've been taking my cars for the last twenty years.
I go to.
These people, they know me.
They're such a nice people.
They're such nice people. I bring them four or five cars every, every year.
You know, sometimes, uh, yeah, I, there's uh. I am working on a seventy-six station in Daily City that they have a repair shop. Hopefully we can.
Move in there.
Pay something for them.
Oh, that would be good. That'd be great. Uh, let's see, what else was I gonna say?
I'm glad that Mister had that hands on, hands on to your business. I, I really admire those kind of managers. Public business owner. Hands on, that's good.
Okay, those were my questions, thank you.
Okay, so um, my question is, um, are. Well, first of all, what's the name of the nearest car wash that you operate?
The name of the car wash?
Mm-hmm.
Or the, uh, are you talking about the brand of the car wash or the name?
Yes, just so we can have like a, I may, I may want to check out the touchless versus soft brush.
Okay, the, the, okay, well, the name is gonna be basically, it's a soft touch or touch free.
Right, so that's the name of the car wash?
No, the name of the car wash that, that we are creating a name for all our car wash and it will be uh, quick clean.
Quick clean?
Yes.
Okay.
With K.
Okay, alright.
Clean is uh, with K.
Okay, now as far as um, the soap that you will use.
Yes, the soap is, uh, we'd uh, use the soap that is recommended by manufacturer. And we buy it from them, that which is Mark seven, Mark seven is one of the, and they produce the soap and car wash. That's who they buy and we have the all, everything in, in a binder.
Hmm.
To, for the review in case, so, and they, they come in.
For the environment?
Come in and to review those.
Okay. So as far as construction hours, I heard, um, what are the construction hours? Just because it's by the residential apartment?
Yes. Construction hours.
So while you're looking for.
Building division, uh, it would be a.
Yeah, it's in the conditions of approval of our building division.
Yes, right there. Eight AM to five thirty PM Monday through Friday.
Yep, that's right.
What is it? It's eight?
Eight AM to five thirty PM Monday through Friday. Um, and there's no startup of machines or equipment or. Delivery of materials or equipment or cleaning or servicing machines prior to seven thirty AM or after six PM. And yeah, it goes into, into more detail about the holiday hours and, and um, it's, it's pretty specific.
Okay, what about any uh, traffic closures or barriers? Just because this is school hours, uh, Mondays to Fridays, um, a lot of people going um, to. And um, you know, taking their kids to school, um, will, will you be, will they be needing? Um, to um, close some of the lanes when doing this construction?
That will be uh, something that uh, will be evaluated. When they submit their building permit supplemental. Uh, Public Works looks at that to determine whether the, they'll, they'll need encroachment permits for that. And, and any street closures, that's gonna be evaluated by the Public Works.
Yeah, because it is, um, as it is, um, without the car wash, um, in this site. Um, that stoplight right there going into, that's going into the freeway.
Hmm. Yes, the uh, Public Works Traffic Engineering will, will be, when they review the building permit supplemental. Uh, will uh, basically have, have, have comments on that. But there's also some, um, you know, they, they also have specific conditions, conditions of approval related to that, so. Yeah, it needs to be approved by the, by the city engineer.
I, I hope, I do hope not, that we don't have to, you know, just because of the hours.
Yep.
But anyway, we, I mean, I myself look forward to um, this construction. Revitalizing that gas station, um, with the car wash and with the um, uh. Is it a gift shop? What is it? Convenience store, with a convenience store, definitely people, you know, on their way to work, they can stop here. Um, it will beautify that corner for sure.
We'd uh, we are planning to do that. I think that convenience store serve, is gonna serve the public really well.
Yes.
And there is so many of walking traffic we have around there.
Yes, for sure.
Nothing close to it, so.
No, only um, Chevron, which is the other side by the wa.
Right.
Yes. Um, another question. Anybody else have a question?
Yes, yes, to be serious that I am, I'm not. Uh, how many gallons of gasoline do you need for per month?
Uh, how many gallons of gasoline do I, what is it?
Per, per month, for the current uh, situation?
For, for current, one we do about hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred fifty, I'm thinking about the taxes. How much we get every year?
We knew about hundred and fifty thousand. And we, we're thinking by doing what we are doing.
Hundred fifty thousand multipliers.
Yes. See, one, one thing that we are doing, that, one of the strategies that we always use. If you purchase car wash, we, we give you twenty cents discount. On your gas. So when you buy gas, if you say, do you want a car wash? And say yes, your gasoline price drop twenty cents automatically. So it's, we expect to have more gasoline.
That's good. Uh, now I am be- beginning to learn. I wanted to have the gasoline station also one day. But it's, it's really uh, enlightening because uh, yeah, hundred, hundred fifty, fifty thousand dollars a month?
Yes.
That's a lot of money for Daily City, huh?
Yeah.
You know, I am a businessman also, that's why I'm thinking about.
Yes, that's it, that's basically good.
My grandson loves to, if he wants to go there to, and they want the, the store, the convenience store, they go to. Get a lot of things.
The car wash, kids love the car wash.
Having car wash.
Yes, yes.
So it, it's really, uh, now I understand why uh, I, I would encourage gasoline station here.
Yes, you should come and try it and uh, you know, we invite you, we invite everybody there, yes.
You know, the process here is, yes, we, we are a ministerial body here, because finally it will be the city council that will approve it. But more appropriately, we ask these questions for the sake of the people around. They want to know also what's going on. Which is, this is, this is really our role as, as a community leader, civic leaders. We have to really extract a lot of information for the benefit, a general interest and welfare of the community.
Of course.
So, uh, we'd like to hear Daily City to do this, sir. Thank you.
And to add to what Commissioner Satori was just saying, um, do you have signage on site? Um, just letting people know that new construction will, um, I mean.
We, we definitely gonna have that, those signage. Yes, the contractor usually put those signage.
Yeah, nothing happens till they get permission.
Okay.
Making us a deal like.
I would, I would just echo what uh, my colleagues have said, especially Commissioner Satori about um, our. Always looking out for the people that live in the area, number one, and also the contribution. That uh, you make to the community at large, uh, by bringing uh, services. Uh, which uh, are good for our neighborhoods and also being part of our business community. Uh, because we have a lot of different businesses in, in our community and they all support each other. And um, uh, I'm, I'm wondering if you've ever joined the Chamber of Commerce, for example, to. Uh, be part of the business community here in Daily City and to uh, be able to uh, share the things that you do with other businesses.
You know, I have not in Daily City, other cities, I do, Sunnyvale, I am, uh, uh, San Jose. But uh, I definitely uh, be happy to, to come in and share that. It's, it's really.
Yeah.
It's really something that benefit the community as well.
It does, does.
As uh, the business.
And it also promotes your business as well, you know, as far as that goes.
Of course, thank you for that.
Of course.
Yeah, that, thank you. I'll be looking to that. And uh, I think by having a new construction over there. And you know, it's gonna help.
That'd be great.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, um, if um, nobody else has um, further questions. Their recommended action is for um, adopting the findings as outlined. And adopt the categorical exemption determination for the project. And approve the use permit UPR dash zero one, dash zero one six, zero four four. And design review DR dash zero one, dash two three, dash zero one, zero six four six. As conditioned herein.
I saw move for the immediate approval of this measure.
I'll second that.
Uh, I, I just have one comment.
Yes.
For the final approval on the architect of record.
Ah.
So condition uh, of approval number two to do with the expiration of the permit, limited one year. We would like to have the option of expanding it just in case if we need for financial reason.
When does it expire as it is?
It says, right now it says uh, one year, usually.
One year from?
From the date of the city council approval. Other jurisdiction, always they put a, a provision to, you know, uh. Extend it, yes.
Yes, what would, what do we do here? I'm, I'm looking to.
Allow us to extend.
I'm looking to staff.
Recommend it to us.
Typically, what we do is, as you near that one year, if you don't have the permit, you request an extension. And we take that to council on the consent agenda.
Yeah, but it's not written here, that's all. It's not in the condition.
No, that's, that's why, would you like, that's why you're requesting that now?
Are you requesting that it specify, or you are asking for a two-year approval now?
Uh, no, I'm asking for.
Clarification.
To expand, to extend the permit.
Beyond the one year.
Request, we can do that.
It's, it's just a, it's just a buffer in case.
Yeah, just in case.
When this, when this project goes to the city council, the applicant can request at that time.
Right.
And uh, 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 an extension beyond the initial year.
Okay.
And, and the city council would usually grant that.
Alright, so we'll stay as it is for now, right? Okay, so we have a motion to approve and we have a second. Uh, everyone?
Moko?
We have, uh, Kim?
Uh, Satori?
Yes.
Nouris?
Hi.
Katoar?
Yes.
When is it going to the council?
Uh, it would go October twenty-seven.
So you heard it, by October twenty-seven, it goes to the council. It's, you're in good hands.
Is there any staff communications? Thank you, thank you Sam, thank you all.
No staff report.
So now, um, move to adjournment?
No, 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 uh.
No, not yet?
Not yet?
Stop communication.
So none?
Okay, I'd like to inform my colleague here that I received an invitation here. For Oc- what's October twenty, for the. For the planning commissioner, navigation, something like that. And this will be on October twenty-nine. So if, if any commissioner interested to, this is a good one, but I have joined this already. This training provides new and seasoned planning commissioners the opportunity to meet colleagues from other cities. Share experiences and discuss current planning issues in San Mateo County. Space in the tour will be limited to approximately twenty guests. The space in the tour will be limited to approximately twenty guests. Appetizer and snacks will be provided. Please register by October twenty two at uh, I'll give it to you, contact Billy Stone. So.
Wow, thank you.
Yeah, I think we've attended those before. I have and so have you.
So this one is
Maybe you can forward it to us.
Me, I have attended about twelve. Yeah, that's why I'm saying to you now that the e- especially the the new one or to you spe- you want to really to interact with those commissioners.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Thank you. Forward that, please.
This is a planning commission navigation tour. I don't know what does it mean to them. So late, what is the latest in the in the county and in the California?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay.
And uh
Now I can make a motion to adjourn? Yeah, motion to adjourn?
I don't know. Yeah, it's up to you. I will say.
Yeah, will you second it?
Well, before we adjourn, uh uh I would like to say that uh we have a very uh very successful kasayahan twenty last Saturday. I saw the 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 director with the dog. Big dog. But I also inviting you on uh October eighteen, by?
October eighteen, yes.
Eighteen uh for this
Next weekend.
Top of the hill.
The hill festival.
Yes.
So it is a Daly City project, so I implore the Daly City residents to at least attend it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ray. Now.
Are we ready?
Are we ready?
Move for adjournment.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned?
Aye, thank you.